We have.
We were sure. We were serious.
We were still bulldozing snow, bulldozing snow in in May.
They can, they're not changing the bridge. I wish they would have changed the bridge and made it wider, but they.
I'm okay.
What they actually done was it's they're doing some overlay there, uh but they had some culverts that were resting out and so they replaced. But with the overlay, they actually, there was too much on top of the bridge. So, uh they dug out that and replaced that. Uh so they're resealing between the overlay and the bridge.
So like when you get too many layers of shegel and eventually you just gotta take them off.
Yeah, no, they're 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 gonna go grind it up. They're gonna mill it off. And then they're gonna do an overlay all the way from. Actually here in town back to the junction. That's what you're seeing down at the junction, those piles. So that's gonna go in a chip and seal. Uh but it's a a little bit different chip and seal. It's a thicker slurry seal type stuff. With the chips to try to seal as many of the cracks and and fill in. Make it a little more smooth, but and then that's what they're doing here in town there. It's kinda like I was talking to that guy from Steger Parsons yesterday and I said, you guys ought to be really. Asphalt and now you can't even stay in your vehicle as you're gonna. Just don't worry about it. We we're gonna grind it off. It'll be all right. And that's the same this up here that they've done. You drive along and it's just like this. They they had they had soft spots and the soft spots kept. Basically migrating and so they decided they said dig them out and then put a different base in. And try to get rid of the soft spots.
And it's only there in the middle of the road.
They identified that in the middle of the road and then on that side down by the bank along in there. Um they did that and then there's one on the other side that they. Once they're all done with that, they'll come in and mill it, make it all s- smooth but rough and then they're gonna come in and chip and seal over. I, yeah, it it doesn't make a lot of sense what they're doing, but.
Yeah, yeah, it should help since it's. Yeah, UDOT's pretty good at, they lay enough conduit that they let other companies pull through it. Which they should, cause it's all publicly funded, so it'll help.
Well, UDOT's not a, they're not a, yeah, they're not a provider.
I think Centracom is pulling through at the same time, but I think it'd be cheaper for for us to pull our own than to lease. Centracom are part of Fiber West, like a conglomerate, so they do share some fiber. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, you can get access to basically anything. Well, it's kind of interesting that they're just going straight down the middle of the of the road, you know, cause it's too close. I wondered if that's what they were gonna do is just cut down and go deep enough that when they tear up the road, it doesn't. I think initially they weren't gonna do that, though. They weren't gonna go in the middle of the road, but then they had to do it for one section and like, this is way easier. Let's just keep doing.
They come out, go for ways and pack off and come back.
Yeah, if it's soft enough.
So they kinda, you know, figured out where they're gonna have to. They dug on their tip that one, just.
I drove by before and after it happened, you know, right there, right by the road shed.
They had it.
Well, they tipped the truck?
Almost.
There, well, it wasn't their truck. It was their, it was their cutter, big wheel. They were trying to go alongside the road and and then.
Shoulder of it?
Yeah, they were on the, they were on the drop off shoulder. Tracks were off the ground. They had a truck hooked onto it, keeping it from tipping over and. They were trying to get the blade, the thing of it is those blades that you can't. You know, the only thing that was keeping it from tipping over was the blade was still in the ground. But the tracks. They finally got it tipped back up and then went back up a little ways further and. But they still continued to try to go along there. About the guy that was running that was wondering whether he was gonna go over.
All right, Ben coming in? Are we calling him?
I don't know.
Oh, there he is. Come on up. Sit down, yeah. I just mentioned if he was coming or calling or what, but so.
I'm ten minutes early.
You are.
In defense.
That's cause Monty's open.
Oh, I didn't take it. Want to take it back, though. How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good to see ya.
It's good to see you too.
Resolution to enact personnel policy. Five dash six hundred drug and alcohol free workplace.
And did, uh, Lou Jean give you that release of reliability form? For the rodeo?
Yes, yes.
Did that look okay?
I think this is the the one that you you'll have to sign.
You got a copy of it? Me, do you wanna go over it?
Sure, ready now to do that?
Since that's not a public hearing, we don't have to. Yeah, yes, I know it looks weird, but we're doing, here's our microphone and this is our camera.
Okay, we're missing Anna Lisa. Is she gone today?
Yeah, she's out of state, so. And then I forgot my little dongle that does all the stuff, so.
All right, well, uh so this is a proposal. That we discussed before, it's would be, it would be policy five dash six hundred in our personnel policy handbook. Does everybody have a copy in front of them?
Yep, right here, opened right up to us.
I think we discussed the terms of this last month. Uh this is a version that would be ready for, uh signing today if the commission approves. Do you like me to go through the provisions? Questions?
I don't know if we need to since we talked about it.
About it last month, yeah.
Second. Hey, moving second, any other discussion?
Wouldn't that be great? I'll put a copy. Send a copy to be emailed out to each department head, so that every employee will have it soon. All right, there is a resolution.
Let me re-involve. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Just a copy of a resolution.
I think it's like you need to sign that. Are you keeping her papers for since?
I guess so.
Since you had that one? Uh, do we need a? Do we need a motion on this liability thing or just sign it?
It's just, it's just, it's just one that they sign and give back to us.
Okay, so we'll just give it to Lou Jean to.
Whatever fee you come up with.
So John, you'll have Anna Lisa sign those?
Yes.
The resolution and the.
They're never gonna make it to her. This will be the file that makes it to the office.
Sounds good. When does she come back?
Next week.
Oh, is she?
I guess we do have to wait on this next part.
Public hearing till eleven.
So we'll have, we have to wait till eleven to do that, won't we?
Guess while we're sitting here, is there anything else that's on the commission's mind or?
So we've had, uh, county residents come in and they were gonna change their ground from ag to.
It was rezoned, they rezoned it from ag to residential. To tour for a subdivision. And, uh, since they've done that, I think zoning has, uh. Redone their. That if a rezon, if someone rezones something, they fail to record that. In other words, come with a final plat in in three years, then it reverts back to its original self.
Okay.
Okay, so this individual zoned several years ago. It was going into a subdivision, is what it was. So one way from that and they, but they're. According to the. Subplanting and zoning is because they never did get it recorded within the three years and. Like it's never been fully recorded, a final plat was never recorded ever. And it's been over about eight years. They wanted to make sure that they, they wanted to go back into ag. At this point in time, because those. Something changed their. Con- covenants, I guess, so to speak, um this, if it hasn't been recorded, that it automatically reverts back. So is there a problem with reverting that back into ag or that was not a flat record?
And the landowner wants it back in act, okay. And has an issue arisen or are they just wondering if they're good to go, that they're back in act?
There is not an issue with letting it revert back because we already have. Covenant place with planting and zoning says, if you don't record, your final plat within three years it reverts back.
I imagine we'd be fine, but I'd better check and be sure. Uh, does the person, do you know the person's name?
Yeah, it would, well, it would be, uh, Mountain Springs subdivision is what it was. Troy Peterson is and and his father, uh Mike Mattson father. No, father, stepfather, Mike Mattson, um were the ones that come forward and requested the rezon and had a rezon. With the economy, the way things kinda just come apart at that point in time, they have. They're no longer going to do that subdivision in a span of period of years.
Yeah.
And they like it back into ag versus, uh, what they rezoned in, which was residential.
What was the subdivision called that they proposed?
I believe it was Mountain Springs.
Yeah, let me look in that. Do you want me to get back to Troy directly? Do you have a phone number for him or an email?
Well, I guess, I I guess at this point in time, we just wondered if we had to, we needed to take action on that.
Yeah, do we need to do anything else other than?
Where it didn't, it wasn't done, can the assessor just automatically, um. Put that back into ag or is there need to be some type of action taken because it was ever recorded?
Yeah, let me check the development code. If that looks to be true, that it just automatically went back to ag, do you want me just to notify Kim? Just to make the change?
And do we need to have, does Kai need to change anything?
I don't know because it was never recorded.
So it should be the same as it was.
Yeah, so she has no recording. The final plat was ever recorded.
Yeah, I'll take care of that this week. I'll either notify Kim that we're good to just automatically make the change. Or if there is a problem and that he does need to take some step himself. Then I'll reach out to you and get Troy's contact information and let him know, unless you have that contact information now.
I do.
But you probably oughta call us.
Call you first?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll call Bill. Or who's, who's spearheading it? I'll call you either way, Sim.
Yeah, let me know.
So I guess one question I do have, if this is something we probably just need to discuss. Would be that when an individual comes in and gets a conditional use permit. You launched and it's granted to them, is that an automatic? Renewal on that permit or does that need to be something planning and zoning needs to address every year? Reauthorizing those permits.
I think Mitch does all the re-ups unless there's a issue with one.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So is that, is that something that there's a documentation that?
Yeah.
Needs to take place that, oh, have a list of all condition use permits.
Do you mean they haven't begun building or completed their building or?
Well, a a conditional use permit, I mean, once you grant a conditional use permit. I mean, does it just automatically go on forever or does this need to be? You know, reauthorized every year? That's the question I guess I got.
I think he re, I think he reauthorizes them all unless there's a complaint or an issue. And then the P and Z, uh, uh. Look at all the new ones. But old ones, if there's no complaints, they just automatically redo, re-up them.
Looks like Mitch is coming in at.
Eleven thirty.
Tell us about his process.
But he hasn't, Mitch is claiming that he hasn't had one for a while and Troy is saying. When he bought that place. So he thinks that I'll just have a continued and I think Mitch has given him. That's what I'm getting from Troy. And I think we just need to give him, I mean, I think we need to grandfather it in be. Same as it's been for sixty years, don't you?
Well, if I had one, why wouldn't it be continued to be reauthorized if that's our process, I guess? That's the question we need to ask.
Why did it not? Yeah, I don't know.
If everybody else.
My, and my question when he was here is if he has a business license, which you guys gave him one, right? Years ago.
Yeah, that's what the minutes said.
Why does he need a CUP? Cause he has the license to do it. I thought they only needed one or the other. Any other questions for Ben while we have a minute?
Oh, how are we coming on our?
Good, I met with Chris again yesterday. We meet every month and. We're on track. He's doing great.
Get a copy or draft of those and.
Okay, while we've got a second, any questions on these personal property tax exceptions? Should we have?
If you guys don't have any questions, then I'll make a motion that we approve them as presented by our assessor.
Okay, moving second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. About the minutes, you have a minute to look at the minutes? I wonder if we need to see if. Dirk's office want to call Ryan Pratt and see if what his story is. He's coming or what? Do we need to do that?
Well, yeah, we oughta find out. I believe that there's a number here.
Or should we call him?
We could probably take care of that if you wanna try and call him.
Ryan, this is Sim Weston. Sim Weston with Rich County Commission. Good, we had you on the agenda for ten o'clock this morning. For a business, for a business license request.
I apologize, we canceled that. I thought we canceled that. I thought I had Rachel cancel. Yeah, we ended up not taking that job up there, so. We were gonna leave the crew up us that way and for the summer and stuff. And wanted to take on other stuff, but we ended up canceling it. So I apologize.
Oh, you're fine.
We just wanna, just wanted to make sure, um, we had you on the agenda, so we just wanted to call in, but if, uh.
My apologies.
Not a, not a, not a problem, Ryan. We just, uh, just wanted to follow up, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Where did the X, oh, here they are. Did you get a chance to look at these?
I looked at most of them, yeah.
You all looked at them?
Yes, I looked at them already.
Yeah, I think we all got copies of them, so. I didn't see anything that stood out that I need any other information on, so I'd make a motion that we approve the expenditures for. May.
Okay, second that.
Move in sector that the may expenditures be approved. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Think you can pick whatever one you want. I haven't signed anyone yet.
Okay, according to my clock, it's eleven o'clock, so we will. I'll entertain a motion to go into a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, move in sector, we go into a public hearing for Rich County refuse ordinance. Do you, do we have to do them separate or together?
Uh, I think, I think the other one's at eleven fifteen.
Okay, so we'll wait on it. Okay, got a second to go?
Yep, second.
Moving sector, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Saying none, we will go into our public hearing. You wanna give us a little history on that?
You bet, uh, do you have this in your packet? You bet, uh, do you have this in your packet?
Yes.
So we have had a refuse ordinance in place since two thousand fifteen. Um, I think we talked about last month. Uh, the issue arose arose that there's some. It was vague about whether. Uh, what what point a landowner begins to be responsible for this. And the specific instance that arose was that somebody had built a home. Got a certificate of occupancy, but not yet sold the home and was not yet receiving a can service. And that change. We put into place.
Is that in section four?
Section four, let's see. Yeah, section four. Which would now read. Each owner and occupant of land located in the county is liable for the payment of said service fee. The liability for the fee for the fee begins when both, one, the county has issued a certificate of occupancy. And two, the owner begins to receive collection services. And then, uh, John, you brought up last month that some of the gallon measurements, those have been included, likely discussed. Other than section four and the gallon size, no changes have been made to this ordinance.
Okay. Any public comment?
Do they online, John?
Um, there are some people online, but there are no comments.
Seeing none, entertain a motion to leave public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. So.
I'd make a motion, oh. I'll make a motion that we. Adopt the changes to the refuse ordinance.
Second.
Okay, moving second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. So we'll wait fifteen more minutes.
Do you have a good clean copy or?
I.
I brought one if you don't.
Probably don't.
So if you'll just date and sign. I'll just mark that everyone was a yes.
I didn't mark that one either, that other one.
Great, I'll get this from Annalisa when she gets back and then I'll have it updated on our website.
Okay.
How much more?
Oh, perfect.
Can I give that to you also?
Okay, I guess we'll wait another ten minutes.
Okay.
We don't let any grass grow.
No, we don't mess around. How's the water season up here? Is it gonna be a good cow year?
Pretty good, price of cows is really, really good.
Is it, why?
I think numbers are down, so prices are up. The grass is short, we need rain horribly bad, we haven't had a drop of rain forever. So. And there isn't any in sight.
Supposed to get extremely warm too, I believe.
John, are you in the cow business at all?
You know, I know cows are up, cause I do have, I think I have five or six, but they just run with my father-in-law and every once in a while we'll get a check and it's like. The one, the couple that came recently, it's like, holy cow, this must be doing pretty good.
So you own a couple of cows, but they run in your father-in-law's herd?
Yeah, my wife takes care of them, she loves ranching, so.
Oh, that's cool.
But again, I never know whether they've calved or anything until money shows up. Just hoping that things are on the up and up.
That's the best way to be.
I need to work my deal that way.
Yeah.
Yeah. You should put your cows in that.
Yeah, I always forget about them. Does Dan got room for some more?
Probably not.
How many cows does your father-in-law do?
I I think, I don't know, five to seven hundred, somewhere in there.
How about you, Sam, how many cows are you riding?
I got too many to feed, not enough to sell.
I'm gonna jump ship and. I usually sell my calves on Superior in August. But the Sheridan sale, I'm going to steamboat next month.
Where's that?
Steamboat Springs.
Colorado? So you sell your calves?
On that on that video sale.
Rather than?
Rather than go.
Feed and raise your calves and then sell them, isn't it old?
No, this is just contracting them and that this fall when they come off their moms, the contract for them set and they just go. Yeah, so, but we usually do it in August. In Sheridan Wyoming, but. Last few years, the July sale's been better, so we're gonna try it, hope we don't regret it.
So like what was that cow selling for last year versus this year?
Uh, the weight, the calves that we were dealing with were. Right around sixteen to seventeen hundred dollars a head.
This year?
This past last year.
Last year, how about this year?
Right now, the markets got them at about two thousand, twenty-one hundred.
Yeah, my check was like two thousand eighty.
So.
That's great. Bill, how many cows are you?
We're good. We're we're, yeah, we're fine, um, yeah.
You don't, do you video yours or just sell them?
My video. I'm not sure what I'm gonna do yet. Haven't made that decision as to where and where. Better get a hold of Dan and tell him you want you want the other half, John, if you want, if the check was only two thousand dollars, only pays you for half a half of a B.
You know what, he can keep all of it, I don't, like I said, I don't even know they exist until it shows up, I kinda feel bad. One time I actually gave me a check and I left it in my pocket or something and found it like three months later, but it was all ruined from being like washed. Like, I don't even, I can't even go ask for a new one, it's not like I did anything for this money, it's like, can you write me another check for that? For something I didn't know. So we just kinda lost it that year, but.
That's funny. Yeah, you should've went and got another one.
Yeah.
Cause he prob- Donna probably wondered, why do you don't cash that check?
Yeah. Well, I've lived in one of their houses for free for my whole marriage, so that's another thing where I'm just like.
Yeah.
Feel bad, you know, sometimes, so. I I'm, I thought we'd probably at least have a few people show up for this T R T thing, but we'll see.
So I called down and talked to the tax commission to figure out when this would be effective, and if we can get them. In the next two weeks, all the forms they need, this tax will go into effect October first.
Don't even miss this this summer, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if we're still, we would still be eligible to apply for the grant. This this coming year.
Well, so. I'm not sure. The, even if, well. So the legislation wasn't passed until March, I don't think you can even apply for it.
I think the legislation doesn't go into effect until July first, right?
Right.
Well, I have the statute right here.
Yeah, it doesn't even go into effect until July first.
I don't think we're late, I think we're.
I think it's, I think everybody's gonna be pretty much on the same cycle, so there probably will not be. Um, money in that until.
Next year.
Yeah.
And the other, I talk, when I talked to the lady at the tax commission who does this very thing, she mentioned several other counties that. Were holding their hearings right around us as well. That she was aware of, so we're, we're right there. Yeah, here it is. The changes for counties of the second, third, fourth, fifth, or sixth class. We could begin a four point five percent tax only on July first. And since this law didn't even take effect until May tenth or something like that.
Right.
I don't think we could have even done this ordinance in time to catch the July first date, cause we would have had to have done this in March, which would have been illegal.
Right.
So I think we're okay.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, you know, that I guess the answer to the question is is. Is can we apply for any of the those grant funds for emergency services that there's. This pool, part of this pool is gonna be enacted, I I don't know that there'll even be any grant funds in it until. After, you know. Probably till after October, but.
Yep.
It, and that's if they, if they was able to get it enacted and. Well, I just don't think any of them would have been, well, I don't, and I shouldn't say that, but. I'm just wondering if any of them would be enacted, any of the counties would be enacted before the first of July. So they could start collecting the first of July, and I'm guessing that that's, that's a very tight turnaround.
Yeah.
Especially when the tax commission says that you can't. It's the next quarter once it's enacted, so. Okay, I got eleven fourteen and eighty, or forty-five seconds.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to go into public hearing. For transient room tax ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, I'll open up the discussion for transient room tax ordinance, public hearing. Wanna give us some of the history of your changes there?
Yeah, just now that we're. In years past, uh, state code has allowed counties to impose a four point two five percent transit room tax. Which is what Rich County has been historically imposing. Uh, the Utah Legislature. Uh, effective that first weekend, man, I can't remember what exact date. Uh, amended fifty-nine dash twelve dash three oh one subsection one, which now reads. A county legislative body may impose a tax on charges for the accommodations and services described. In fifty-nine twelve one oh three, which is our transit room tax, at a rate of not to exceed. And then it says for counties of the second through sixth class, four point five percent beginning on or after July first, two thousand twenty-five. The purposes for which the county can use the tax are found under seventeen thirty-one dash two. Which states. Read that to you. Let's see. We can use them for tourism, recreation, film production, conventions. To pay for tourism, recreation related facilities in the county, including acquiring, leasing, constructing, furnishing, maintaining, operating. Convention halls, exhibit halls, visitor information centers, museums, sports and recreation, practice field stadiums, arenas, trails. Recreation destinations, transit services, shuttle services, parking infrastructure, airports. Uh, solid waste disposal operations, emergency emergency medical services, search and rescue activities. Law enforcement activities and road repair and upgrade to class B, C, and D county roads. We can also use it to make the annual payment of principal interest or premiums on. Uh, any bonds to do any of those projects. Um, the new, the proposed ordinance that we have before the commission today, looks like you have a copy that has the red and green.
Yep.
Changes, uh, the red would be language that would be removed. And the green would be a language that is added in. And this would. Uh, one other change this makes too, if you turn with me to section six. Section six subsection C, the old ordinance had the annual reports going to. Uh, three different places, the Department of Tourism and the Governor's Office. Uh, the county's tourism tax advisory board and the Office of Legislative Fiscal Analysts. The new, uh, the new change to state code just has our report go to one place, which is the State Auditor's Office. Um, so those changes, I think those are all that's proposed.
So, um, why on on the section four B, why? Why did you remove B?
So that was a definition to the word tourism.
Yeah.
Um, the, uh, the old ordinance under two C.
Yeah.
Um, stated that the use. Uh, traditional transit room tax revenue to establish and promote tourism. We removed that and just inserted now. The green language, which was for the purposes authorized under seventeen thirty-one two subsection three, which is the list that I read.
Okay.
And the new list is much broader than tourism, it still includes tourism, trails, exhibit halls, things like that. But, uh, we don't wanna, I figured the commission wouldn't want to limit this to tourism. But we'd wanna grab that whole list that's now authorized for use, which includes things like law enforcement. And so since we are expanding that to include the whole list, we don't use the word tourism, and so we don't need a definition for tourism anymore.
Any comments from the public, anybody online?
No.
Okay. Seeing none.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I'll also make a motion that we approve these changes to the transient room tax ordinance. Increasing the rate to four point five percent.
Second.
Moving second that the. Taxable rate be four point five transit transient room tax, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimous.
I think there's one right here.
You have a clean copy?
Yes.
Great.
Rich County Transit Room Tax Ordinance, what's the difference between the two?
What are you talking about?
What do you mean, Bill?
Well, we got two here. Is this just our old ordinance?
Uh, this is a clean copy and this was a copy to show you the edits.
Okay.
Okay, so you have the clean copy signed?
Yep.
Okay, I'll get that from Annalisa too.
All right.
All right, that's an important stack, John.
Yeah.
Have you leave me your driver's license or something?
Okay, everybody's with, everybody's witnessing, I am not taking them home.
All right, well, that's all the stuff I have today. So, all right, great.
Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, you bet, it's good to see you.
You're awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll call you about that one thing.
Okay, uh yeah, let me know.
All right, thanks guys.
Thanks.
Thank you. Drive safe.
Okay, do we not have minutes then?
No, apparently not, let me go check.
There's none in our packets, I see.
Yeah, we did those, right?
Probably pretty close to done.
Yeah, other than much. How many times is he gonna be here, eleven thirty?
Oh, there's the ambulance one, huh, perfect.
Okay, so I guess the guy that's doing the septic density study is, is Derek Few, and he's gonna call in, I guess. Okay.
How's things out at the landfill with the, with the scale going, John?
Yes, it's pretty good, I need to talk to you guys, we probably need to add like a telephone pole or a small tower, like. I, I would donate, I'm guessing maybe like eight hundred bucks in concrete, to something that's tall enough that we can stick a camera on. Cause the shed's not quite high enough for a camera to see what's in the trucks or whether it's covered or not. As far as when they go on the scales.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Scales work, and I'll even, I, I have a tower I could donate, cause they're, they're only a few hundred bucks, and one's been sitting in my backyard forever.
How tall is it?
I was thinking we need to do probably at least twenty or thirty feet. If, especially if we're just mounting cameras, I mean, it's a, it's a little metal one, you could still climb it, but. That way we could stick up like an access point as well, so there's some wifi out there for, if we ever get like trucks that need tracking or things like that. The scales work great, we just need to incorporate um the customer numbers, and they've started doing that on the, on the big guys like. Greenwaste and Delmas, so they can track it. One thing that we overlooked is a system that they could do without somebody being there, there's nothing that, like, you know, like at the scale house. And I don't think we wanna give people access to inside the office. And so I reached out to, to the guys at the scales and they do sell the pedestals. Um, there are even some used ones, I think the lowest one was like twenty-four hundred bucks, just something that the, is self-serve. Um, but I haven't got very good uh hard pricing on it, so I still need to work on that, but the scales work great.
So that would be they pull on the scale, put their member number.
Yeah.
And then record them, yeah.
That was a weigh-in and then they weigh on the way back out, put their member number in.
Yeah, and if they don't on the way, on the way back out, we'll have a log that says they never weighed out, but then we can go back on the cameras and look. You know, it'd all be time based on the, on the same exact system. So there's no like mixing or matching of times, and when things happen, it's all the same clock with the cameras. I did, so we do have, I haven't hooked up those cameras yet because we need that base, but they're, they're gonna be pretty cool.
So if we do that. And you've got your tower there for your cameras, are we gonna have to have? Like a motion detector light that comes on, that lights up the scale, so your camera would be able to actually, after dark.
So the cameras can see pretty good at nighttime, um, we'd probably mostly want. Some motion light wherever like the pedestal is, so like users could, could access it.
Yeah.
More for them, the cameras are gonna be fine no matter what, let me see if I can, because we have a couple cameras set up, we've had for a while. These are just, just ones I set up quickly. So like, here's the battery room, then here's. Here's outside on the shop, so you can see it right now, but you can go back and.
That's live?
Yeah, the internet's being a little bit slow, let me go to high quality. See if it starts looking a little better.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, so I was thinking right here.
Yeah.
A, a tower that we can look down in, um, and then I already have an, another camera that I was gonna stick on the. That would be what, the west corner?
Side, yeah.
So we could see this, the, the solar and people who come past, so you see the quality's pretty dang good. But you can scroll back in time and see stuff that's, that's happened. Again, it's more slow based on, for some reason, the internet error, the courthouse is going really slow. But you can kinda see like this timeline, people coming in and around.
What's that, that's big.
This can make clips, so we can, yeah, actually has like an incident management, so if something happens, we can. Click a new tab and it will compile everything that happened during that time period.
What's he hauling?
Looks like dumpsters.
Yeah, that's their lot of dumpsters in this country. But we can go back days, I mean, it's, you're back to, you know.
Twenty-first of whenever, last month, and we'll click here, I'm not sure what this is. But I think it'll hold up to thirty or forty days of storage.
So on your camera that's down, you wanna put down there. Is that something that you can, it can be wireless then?
Yeah, yeah, so, so we, I trench power from right here.
Right.
And then we put up a, an access point that's, has these two buildings talking, so down at the, down there already has internet. So I'd probably just bury a little network cable to the tower from the shack, so it has power.
Okay.
Cause it can, it can carry its power over the internet cable.
Okay.
So this is like last month?
This is the twenty-first of May.
May.
Cool.
So ideally, we would be able to go back on our records and see twenty-first of May at eleven fifty-seven, this guy didn't weigh out, you know? We could at least look at it.
Where's this camera mounted, is it on the shed?
Yeah, you'd see it, it's right on the corner up high.
As high as he's, could get it. So what do we need to do, just pour a little pad out there and?
Yeah, we're talking maybe like, I think it's maybe two yards of concrete, so not a lot, a little box. We'll stick the base in there, let it dry, and then stack the tower, and it's light enough that we don't need any special equipment, and we can just stack it.
Once that's in, I'll add a little box on it. And we'll throw the camera up, I already have the cameras, uh, it's just when I went to Mount on this, I'm like that.
It's gonna be useless, you can't, you can see cars coming and going, but you can already see them over here, we need to see up inside of them.
Interesting.
And then mostly I wanted one on that, on that other side, so we could see the solar, to make sure, you know, if the power's not working, we could see if something's happened, or if they're covered in snow or.
Yeah, yeah, so you know.
Pretty cool though.
Okay, well, will you?
I'll keep you guys posted and send you pictures.
Yeah, let's get that done, John, so the weekend.
Is that the inside there?
Yeah, that's the battery room, well, it used to be their storage room, kinda still is, but. Something was wrong with their pump, the Catwoman's pump, it's turned off for the second, I'm gonna have him turn it back on, but it just ran for. I mean, probably five days straight and just killed the batteries, cause it's built to, to handle the pump just fine, but not all day, every day, now, maybe it was just filling up the line.
Probably so, is that what they did, is turn, well, wouldn't, but they got a storage tank on that, they probably got a storage tank on that.
I don't know.
So I've, I'm, I'm having to turn it on, uh, when the sun is out, so that it doesn't pull from the batteries, just pull from solar. Until it gets filled up. And I remember, I think it did this last year too, but we weren't on solar, they had a generator, so it just ran all day, every day for, took forever to fill up. They got there one day and the power was off, and I looked back and it was, let me show you. Cause you can actually see the, the power usage. Landfill here. And it showed. So you can see how our usage is kinda like, well, let me see here, system overview, we're gonna do this last, this previous month. So you can see all of a sudden, the, the red is our usage, so you can see when they turned it on, and it just ran and ran and ran for days. Then I had to turn them off, and then turn back on during the day. It's a, so I just need to monitor it. Nice thing is when they showed up, the, the panels were enough to keep things going anyway, so it's not like they need it during the night. But we need it during the night for the cameras.
Well, yeah, but I said, what we need to do is talk to them and find out what they're doing, I mean, if they're.
I think that's rested, I don't think it's, unless they're pumping water to another unit.
I think it's just on that side right there.
So I, I don't know. I don't think anything's in there this year.
I don't know, we need to talk to them and find out why they're.
And I haven't investigated at all, so I have no inform, no information.
And it's not, it's not our guys that are using it.
No, cause as soon as I have them flip the breaker to the pump, it, it fixed everything. So I wonder if somebody just came through just to run it, or if they even need it, we need the generator too, which I need to go pick up from Stacy's. And knock all that up, cause that would have solved that problem, generator would have came, made the difference. Just a lot of little things that.
Yeah, it takes some things to work through.
That's good, that's, that's step, that's a lot of steps in the right direction.
Yeah, and now that we have emails, I can send you guys um. A login to this and how to download it onto your iPads or iPhones, it's, I think the iPhone app is even easier than the computer. I got some other spots too, every once in a while, I'll go to right here and check our dumpsters.
So.
Oh, yeah.
Is that, that, that's one to the trailer court, right?
Yeah.
We were just talking about those this morning before you come in about the mattresses and crap that got piled up there all the weekend.
So we could actually find them on here.
Go back to Memorial Day.
Back in time scrolling, kinda cool, cause you can see what's going on. So like, when, when was Memorial Day? The twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. No mattresses yet, oh wait, is there?
So, yeah, go start, start on the twenty-fourth and go through the twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth.
Unfortunately, it just just ran out of storage right on the midnight of.
The twenty-sixth.
So when it does that, what is that?
It deletes the oldest stuff and keeps going forward, now, I could, I, this is for the HOAs, what I need to do probably for them is prioritize this. This camera, cause they, they also monitor their pool. Or, or do it, you can do it so it records all the time, which obviously. Or or do it, you can do it so it records all the time, which obviously fills it up quicker, or you can do it when it detects something. The only problem is, is every once in a while it misses things if you do just detect. And they could add more storage, you know, if they could add a bigger hard drive that holds twice as much.
Like how full they are there.
Yeah. And they just keep stacking. Here's our guys dumping it. Definitely cleans up after these guys show up. It'd actually be kinda nice to have these on most of the dumpsters. See if we got any mattresses yet.
There's no power up there at all. I mean, you gotta have power.
Yeah, we trenched power from their park.
Right, I'm just. Uh, the the other one would be, you you know, the uh. Trailhead of Hodges Canyon, that's that's a collector if we could get.
You'd have to do like a little solar box, these cameras don't use hardly anything, so if you had a little solar box. Probably, you'd probably be fine for three or four days without sun. Yeah, I think we just missed the. Recording. Seems to be all cleaned up now. Let me go way back as far as I can.
Yeah, people start showing up on Thursday and Friday and.
I can't see here, this is. The mattresses are not.
Was Mitch coming or was he calling in or what's he doing?
Nobody knows. I guess we're still early though.
What done that?
Probably a snowplow. That's our, that's our guard rail, our cattle guard between Idaho and Utah.
He didn't answer. So. But we don't plow over that.
Well, we shouldn't, but the direction it's going, I'm guessing. You know, it looks to me like, I don't know, I'm trying to figure out what the all this green stuff is, but.
Hello?
Hi, Sean, how's it going?
Good, how are you? Uh, are you coming over? Okay, well, let's, we can do her. Not yet, we were waiting for you.
Should we get him on speaker so we can record it?
Let's get Darren on and then we'll have both of you on.
Can we merge him or on that on that old thing or do we need to keep him on this? I don't know how to use that phone. I could, we could merge him on here. I'm wondering if Bill pushed nine before he dialed out.
Nine?
Aren't you supposed to dial nine and then?
No.
One.
No, just one.
Okay.
You didn't know what it is one?
Well, on old IP phones, it was nine first, but.
Do you wanna add him onto there? So they're on the same.
What are you gonna do?
Let's just add him on here and then you.
What's the guy's name?
Ryan.
Darren.
Darren.
Sixteen six, six four one seven. Five two nine two.
Hello?
Hello, is this Darren?
Hello?
Hi, is this Darren?
Yes, this is Darren.
This is, yeah, this is the Rich County Commission.
Oh, hi.
Uh, I have uh Mitch on with us.
Hi, Mitch.
Hey, Dan, how you doing?
Good. Thanks for calling me.
Okay.
No problem.
Go ahead, Mitch.
Okay, so uh Darren and I have been talking about uh, you know, the expansion of bike path. Uh, progressing down south, uh, and acquiring additional funding and things like that. Darren's with Department of Transportation. Uh, and simply in this process, uh, you know, Darren has indicated that we need to start looking at maintenance. Um, and so we wanted to get on the agenda. Uh, cause I've never discussed maintenance of the pedestrian pathways with the commissioners, um, and so. It's kind of an informal discussion to see uh if you guys have discussed. Um, how the pathway should be maintained and then Darren can chime in about, you know, federal requirements for that sort of thing, so. Darren, do you wanna, you wanna chime in a little bit?
Yeah, so this Bell Lake uh Trail Marina Extension basically goes from. Existing trail at the marina right now, we're going north to Swan Creek. So it's a state-funded project, go through UTN, Utah Trails Network. Once the project's completed, the local government will take over the maintenance. And the ownership, uh, the for, as far as the ownership, it gives Utah a right to take it back in the future. When everything's finalized with the Utah Trails Network. But the local government will be maintaining the trails and only the trails for now.
And you're, and you're, at this point in time, you're just talking about the trail from this new marina. To north to, uh, is it, have they decided, go to the, do they come up with enough funding to go to the Idaho line or not?
No, we only have funding for the Swan Creek all the way to uh Swan Creek down to the marina.
Okay, alright. And as far as maintenance goes, is there a detail of what the maintenance ha, is it gonna be required of? Is it gonna be a seal coat? Is it gonna be striping? What what's the maintenance requirements on that?
So we, the AG office is working on the agreements right now. And once the agreement's finalized, was, we can send it to Mitch. And then at that point, you guys can kinda review it and go over the agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll need to know what we're agreeing to before we agree to it.
How far off do you think this, before we see that maintenance agreement, uh, Darren?
I think we're about uh maybe a month, a month out.
Okay. And construction for that is set to go in twenty twenty six, is that right?
Summer twenty twenty six, that's correct. That's our schedule, construction's updated.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so in the, in this agreement, Darren, then it'll spell out um the frequency and the requirements, right?
Uh, that's correct. It'll it'll have the requirements, it'll have ownership requirements and all the conditions.
Okay.
And in city limits, they'll be responsible too. It'll be more than just us, right? It's in the county.
Yeah, this project is all in the county, yes.
Okay, I thought they went farther.
No.
Okay. Alrighty.
Okay, well, we'll be watching for that agreement then, Darren, and uh. As soon as you can get it to Mitch, then we'll review it and then we'll, we may wanna have some more discussion about it and. And then we can move forward with getting it uh in place.
Sounds good, uh, once.
Okay, sounds good.
That sounds great to me.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren, appreciate you being on the line.
Thanks, Darren.
Thanks.
Keep Mitch on.
You still there, Mitch?
Yes, I am.
Okay, what, it says here you wanna talk about septic density study.
Yeah, yeah, so I've been working with the uh Planning Commission uh on changing their uh, changing their ordinance to be more restrictive. Be more protective um of the lake environment. Uh, we've been talking about this for about six months now. And I don't know that we're making a ton of headway. Uh, and then it came across my desk that uh we can do a septic density study, that the Utah Geological Survey. Um, heads this up, and so I, you know, I've been in contact with a Trevor Schlossnagle. Um, and he has suggested that uh that we move forward with this. This study, which will help us to determine, you know, if you've got, uh, you know, if you've got a subdivision that wants to come in. And they are far enough away from an existing sewer system, but they wanna put in seppics. If, you know, what is the appropriate density for those? Is it, uh, you know, is it quarter acre lots? Will the soils accommodate that? Or does it need to be something more like five acres? Um, and so I've been talking with him about this and he's put together kind of a rough proposal. Uh, it looks like it's gonna cost him a neighborhood of eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the Utah Geological Survey would be willing to put up eighteen to twenty thousand. Uh, I've been in contact with Robert Beers at the Division of Water Quality or DEQ. Uh, they have a fund that they can draw from as well. And so I I guess I wanna bring it to the commissioners to, number one, make sure that this is something you guys would be willing to support. And number two, if you would be willing to help fund it and at what level?
Total is gonna be a hundred thousand?
Eighty to a hundred thousand.
And um DEQ has a grant or is it a matching grant or what 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 do they have available?
Yes, they do have a, they do have a fund um available that we can draw from, and I don't know that they're about is um at this point. Like I I've just barely got, started getting these numbers rolling within the last couple of days. Robert's on vacation right now, um, so I haven't heard back from him, cause that was the specific question I asked him, cause I knew that you guys would ask me. Um, where that funding level would be at, right? Cause if they're gonna, if they're gonna fund five thousand dollars, that means that. You guys would be potentially on the line for, you know, upwards of uh seventy five thousand dollars. And I'm going, there's no way the county's gonna do that. Um, so really like this is, this is some preliminary, give you something to think about, um, and chew on. And I can certainly come back next month with probably better numbers than what I've got right now. But I think first stage is, are you, was, is this something you'd be willing to entertain? And I think we can go from there.
Well, the problem is we got some some areas there that are not gonna be able to be put on the sewer system. So we need to have, um. You know, we need to have some information, um, so that we can make sure that we're taking care of. Of any issues of, you know, so I think the study. Um, cause really, uh, we need to get the study in place. So that we have an idea of what our density really can can stand. With with, you know, without a a central sewer system, so. In my mind, I think it's quite important that we do this study. I, as far as funds go, um. I think we need to try and find as many resources as we possibly can. Um, we might, might talk to the Health Department as well and see if if they have. Um, you know, there's some opportunities for them to apply for some grant funds um as well. Um, but.
What do you think about CIB Commissioner Cox?
Um, we could, we could approach them.
Okay, cause they'll typically help uh fund planning studies. They they don't like to do infrastructure for counties like ours. But planning has been uh something they've supported in the past.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, when when was the last time we got money from them?
Oh, gosh, it's been probably uh five or six years, probably.
And what did we use that for? Well, that was for a study, wasn't it?
It was.
Was that our comprehensive plan? What was that?
Uh, I believe it was the comprehensive plan, actually.
Okay. Um, that would be certainly be, maybe if we could get fifty thousand from them and. Or maybe even, you know, sixty thousand. I think if we've got some money and the. You know, if we, if we can put some money in and and DEQ and and make it a a uh. Multi-funded project, I think they'd be very uh. You you know, we we probably could get some money from them, so.
I agree. That sounds good. Okay, well, I will work on that then and come up with a few more funding sources. Uh, get some numbers dialed in for, and just probably be on the agenda next month.
Okay, we'll need, we'll need to, uh, if we're gonna do anything with CIB, we're gonna need to uh. Uh, put those applications uh that we want to to do that.
Right, right. Now, Brian Carver used to help us out with those applications in the past. Brian's gone, so does that mean? Is, do we have another contact at uh at Bragg that can help us out?
Yeah, I I I, I think we do have another contact. He's not quite as. Not quite as good-looking as Brian was, but you know, it's.
His beard's better.
By by far. Yeah, we'll take him, so, um, yeah, so kinda look at that and we'll look at, look at that timeline. And getting an application together, um, because that'll have to be moved forward and. You know, that's, we need to go through that process if we can, rather than just, um, kinda.
Do it early on.
Go go run around um that process, so let's, let's go through that process.
Okay, sounds good. We will be uh be working on that this month and be back on the agenda next month.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thanks commissioners, take care, we'll see ya.
Hey, Mitch.
Yeah.
Thanks for getting people rounded up on the phone for that P and Z. We wouldn't have had enough for in present, but we gotta keep them meetings rolling and that was good that we got. The phone and was able to get it done.
No, I I totally agree. Uh, we're we're letting these things go far too often. If the phone's an option, I mean, in person always works better. Uh, you know, you wanna keep that camaraderie amongst the group, but sometimes the phone option uh helps to patch things together.
Input's a lot easier in person than when you're on the phone too, but it's better than, it's better than nothing, so.
Totally agree, yeah.
Alright.
Okay, thanks commissioners, you guys take care, have a good one.
Yeah, see ya, bye. Alright, well. That's everything on the agenda.
Move we adjourn.
Second. Moving second adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.